Um. First, you do the opening question. I'll be doing the opening before I start. Mister.
Yeah, right.
So how uh?
Afternoon.
No pressure on it.
We have. No, no, come on, sir.
What's your pressure?
Uh ladies, we're getting ready to start, everybody.
Let's pray.
Let's pray, everyone.
And God, thank you for this uh this opportunity just to discuss and I pray for um wisdom for all who enter this council chambers that you would um you you can guide and lead um in all kinds of ways and so we pray that you would lead us and that you would um just lead this town um for your glory, in your name we pray, amen.
Um good afternoon, everybody. We're here to discuss a couple of what we have on our agenda about billing fees, so.
No problem.
Uh billing renter and billing maintenance repair and cleanup. Um first of all, I would like to thank uh Mister.
Mike Anker.
Ralph Luke, Ralph Franch.
I want to thank y'all for coming out because they brought something to our attention, Councilman Benjamin, about our contract and our uh our this the the fees they're saying they're talking about.
What is it that they brought to our attention?
They brought to our attention where they uh the fee for the the billing is five hundred dollars, the convention. And uh the quarterback uh they rents, they gets it for like seven.
We get seven meetings.
Seven meetings, they get they get it for seven meetings. And also, they uh they do a lot.
Uh Ralph may have another. Another quarterback.
Go ahead, I just wanted to see what you're seeing.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
These are the meeting, these are the events scheduled that they will be having at.
They're on Monday nights.
And they meet on Monday nights.
I'm familiar.
And um.
I I'll just show.
And um they're asking us to look at taking consideration and looking at uh for each seven meetings they have, they're paying five hundred dollars, but also they're asking us to take in consideration of of uh they give back a lot, they give back to the.
Quarterback Club gives five scholarships a year, um four thousand. Five four thousand dollar scholarships to local football players, um.
From all the schools?
From all the schools, I mean, they're all, you know, they're all going through the process.
They interview.
I mean city when I say I'm I mean city campus.
Right. And then um in the last two years, the Quarterback Club created an endowment scholarship with the University of Alabama and Auburn University that will always fund students from Dallas County. Um and that was a hundred thousand dollars to Auburn, a hundred thousand dollars to Alabama. Alabama matched it another eighty-one thousand, I believe, so that's a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars that the Quarterback Club has an endowment for Dallas County, the University of Alabama, and a hundred thousand for Auburn. And then last year, we added fifty thousand to each endowment. So that's, I'm not sure the amount of that scholarship, that's uh gonna be around as long as the universities are around. So that's probably about five to ten scholarships with the endowments plus um the annual scholarships presented each year from that and so the we have about fifty something sponsors that help basically cover the cost of the scholarship each year. And then we have a hundred and forty members last year, I believe. And last year, the cost was, the last few years, it's been three hundred plus projector fee. And that included the having Robert there to help clean up and and whatnot.
Set it up.
Set it up and take, you know, be there available, you know, for whatever thing, anything short circuited, you know, we need help with and then so this year, obviously, it's different. Without Robert there, but then the fee went up from three hundred to five hundred and then plus security plus um.
Insurance.
We're having, well, insurance, we needed that anyway, but the the setup and takedown of it is on us as well and so and the cleanup and so that's gonna that by itself is an additional, pretty much four hundred dollars a meeting. Um so that's twenty-eight hundred dollars additional and so we were hoping that we could have it for the same three hundred dollars that we've been paying in the last um.
Uh for all, we paid a hundred and seventy for years and then it went up to three hundred, but we're not asking for free, we just like to do it for the same amount we've been doing.
Because we would still have to pay security and we still had to pay.
Right, right.
We were planning on paying somebody to help us set up and clean up.
I don't think this is something we need to or have to talk about for a very long time, I don't see opposition to this uh with the council. Uh when Councilwoman makes her report, I will support it, um she makes the motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Um. This is okay.
We don't have to spend a lot of time on it, in my opinion.
That's all we're asking for.
That's all.
It's cool.
Okay.
But um and that was my opinion, Councilwoman, I just don't.
Well, I I agree, you know, I agree with with uh, I had already told them I agree uh that uh if they was doing it before. I don't think it would be, it should it should not be a problem because of what you do, you give a lot of scholarships back and uh we appreciate it, we we. It's about working together, I agree.
I did a check-in up on it, we under almost a billion dollars and that's counted, you know, all the schools, don't they?
Combined.
Combined. You know, most of everybody in our organization is business men, you know, leaders.
Yes.
So we have our conference, mayor, everybody's with us.
And we would like to be, we would like to be a be a member too, I would like to be a member.
I would love to be.
Y'all make down, man, really? I'm writing, I'm writing on my membership form.
Oh, I got it, buddy.
I would like to be a member.
Me too.
Another thing, over forty, I did a check-in again, over forty-five years ago, you know, you'd be meeting at country clubs.
Mm-hmm.
Mouse Snow and John Strickwell, Little Stricker, we got together, they wanted everybody to be, they really moved it through the committees.
Mm-hmm.
No, for anybody to join. I did one through there two cents ago.
Well, we about teamwork, we about working together and that's what we want to keep, we don't want, we don't want you to go nowhere else.
Right.
Because we're trying to keep everything we got here in uh in the city buildings, keep the buildings open and keeping them running.
And if you didn't see the lineup, we got some really good speakers.
I see, I'm looking at it now, yes.
I didn't know, you don't write on it.
I promise not to write on that, I did not know. I I didn't know. I didn't know girls would be able to remember.
Take the minutes. Okay, the next thing, um Angie, uh we straight with the the bill.
Yeah.
Uh next thing, we're talking about the the rent, uh you know, when they rent the the buildings, we we want to make sure that all of the equipments are running or or operating in the in these buildings. Um we're talking about, I just talked to Ms. Bassett today about the projector. Um I told her that uh they will have their first event on the ninth, September the ninth. And I wanted to make sure that they have the ice machine, because the ice machine been out for a while. And uh.
It's been a while since it turned on.
And I told her that we need the ice machine working and also we need the the projector where when you have your event that uh use your laptop to operate. She told me that uh that it was, it always worked it and she said, the only reason why it would not work is that if your your laptop or some kind of way connected to the the wiring or the wifi that you operated with. So I told her the best thing that we can do is we work together to to make uh the day before y'all have or any other time when you got available time, let me know and we'll call Ms. Bassett and you bring your laptop to make sure that this projector is working.
Sounds good.
We need to, so we, so you won't have to worry about that. Also, with your 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 microphones and everything else, I'm I'm sending a letter to the mayor or asking them that all the equipment there, because not only you, a lot of other people have been talking about things that when we rent these these buildings out, so.
The water in the mid bathroom, they're running.
Oh, and and I got that on there too, Councilman Benjamin, I'm sending a letter tomorrow. The ladies, the ladies room and remember I told you when it was in there? The ladies rooms and the men's room, we got a major leak somewhere, because there'd be a lot of water on the floor. Uh we couldn't have that sent, uh we writing a letter, I'm sending it to the mayor office tomorrow, uh so he can give it to his department head. Because we do have funding there to fix, to repair some of this.
Are the microphones not working or just not available?
No, they were, they were.
No, that's last, that's last meeting was in November.
So did y'all get them, they gave them to you?
Yes, sir.
Ice machine.
When we done, we want to make sure that everything that.
Last time we're there, they were.
Ice machine problem.
Yeah, but uh we sent a letter, I sent a letter of July the, I think the twenty-sixth to to the mayor requesting uh that the ice machine be fixed and also the projector be uh if it's not fixed, check, so everything will be prepared for you. And also, I'm sending a letter too. We're talking about coming to the building maintenance and the repairs and you know, what you just said.
You you made to number three already, I want to go back to number two.
Okay.
You you have amenities down here, projector right front and all those things and then now we're talking about issues with the buildings and um I think we should make this suggestion, so I'm I'm saying, telling it to you as the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Um these, the the building fees went up, the building fees went up, but the quality of the building went down.
Yes, and that's what I'm talking about.
It's not matching, it it's not matching what happened here in the process and I think until we get up to par, it is my suggestion um that we go back to the original.
And that's what I was going to ask you around. I wanted, I was going to bring that up, that's why, because I had two people call me and I was going to bring that to your attention today at the meeting and talk to you about it. And Mister Johnson, but he's he's not here, so I I talked with you. We went up on the fees, that's what I wanted to say, I was going to get to that. We went up on the fees of charging uh citizen that rent these these buildings from us, but the upkeeping, the cleanliness and the upkeeping, it's it's not, it's not fair to them there, because we don't have anyone in there to clean it up. And uh we seen for ourselves some of the things, I seen on the on the committee. And then Councilman Benjamin was talking about it and I said, this is not fair. Um it's our duty as the committee to, we're going to send this letter to the mayor, some of the things that they need to uh get fixed and we hoping that all of it be done by the time you guys get in there.
Well, for the for the new fee, you could, you know, because you don't have the the daily, I mean, the person here to do all that.
Set up and break down.
And your fee was three hundred dollars, well, if you're a five hundred dollar fee, you could include security and you could include a part-time person in that fee so that when you book it, whoever books it contacts the part-time person that needs some work and says, hey, we got this event on this day, I've got less than three people, can you come set up and take down and clean up for them?
Mm-hmm.
And then then you talk to the police department and say, hey, we've got an event this night, can you provide security from five to eight?
We wish, so we presented.
It it, we presented that to the attorney already. And uh the attorney wants us to stay away from um uh soliciting security for anybody.
Yep.
Soliciting a cleanup and setup person for anybody. Um he said that there would be a liability on us, uh trying to find a person for every single event and soliciting security.
Right.
And and so that was actually my suggestion.
Because you could have your short list of people who were actually.
That's what I suggested, I suggested laid off workers.
Right, you could have that and then you could have the, you know, the option of police officers who you got to call anyway for the the contracts, you got to call the police department to schedule those. If that person just contacts the police department and says this, and then the like our event, who would say, we would contact and follow up, make sure all that was scheduled, do that, find out who those are going to be.
Mm-hmm.
And then.
Yeah, but we were advised against that, so we'll have to follow our attorney on that, but what I'm saying is um just take this amount, because you're going to spend it anyway, just five hundred dollars anyway.
Right.
Bring it back down so that it could uh cover uh security and cleanup.
Okay.
Um and I'm suggesting we just go back down, because those two hundred dollars are still going to be spent.
Oh, by far.
Uh-huh. It's still going to be spent, because uh officers are two hundred dollars an hour.
So you recommend us to change from the five hundred.
Then we go back to the original fee, because we don't, we don't have someone to maintain, we we have a broken ice machine, we have a running bathrooms, we have carpet that needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, and that was, I was going to talk about, well, I I put a list of things on there that uh uh I was going to email you, just want to get a copy of it before we go to the mayor. It was a list of things that I seen that uh we need to do with our our city buildings uh that uh if we don't uh get some of these things repaired, you know, people want to go to nice, clean buildings, they want to be able to.
We're bringing these folks in, one of our speakers, Jill Arrington, she's from Los Angeles, she's flying into Montgomery, she's coming here, so you know, what we expose these people to is our predicament.
And and that's what we don't want, we don't want to do that.
Trying to make it as well as.
That's exactly, that's why I want that carpet pulled up in there.
Oh, we got that on there too, I already, I got a list of stuff that uh when we have guests coming in, uh that uh we have to improve our 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 buildings, we we really do, so.
Doesn't happen with all the speakers, but occasionally, like last year, Holly Rowe was very impactful for her visiting Selma.
Yeah.
You know, and just the history of Selma and she mentioned that at the beginning of her, her message, she's on ESPN all the time.
Absolutely.
And so it's just uh it's nice to put our investment forward for.
And have our building clean, you know, have it cleaned inside, nice and clean. And that's what uh uh if we do it one, get it done, start it out one time and we work on it, uh we need to really, we really need to do it, keep it cleaned up, it needs to be, there's some things over there that need to be fixed.
What else were you saying?
That's it.
Okay.
Well, another thing, I'm getting off some juniors um attendance access to the building. We get in there in the mornings and decorate our tables and start bringing stuff in for the night and so. I'm not sure what the access is anymore, I don't know the tier anymore, but.
Well, you should, you should still be able to get in there during business hours, that's during business hours?
Right.
Yeah, you should.
You should be able to open it, because.
Just go through.
We're open anyway.
Mm-hmm. Just give y'all time, give all the time that you're going to need to be coming, they have little hours, um that they come in and get off, but still, during business hours, they they can open it. Yeah, just give them the time that you want to go in and the time that you want to leave.
We're just out of about eight thirty every night, so it's not late, but we do need to be in there in the mornings to decorate and do different things.
We three in the whole time, early.
Okay, early.
We are.
Well, we, we'll make sure, just tell all your dates and let her know. But we're going to work on these three items, uh make sure that everything was.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
There's your list, but we don't, we need to talk to that before we do it till we.
Yeah, y'all, y'all didn't get the right uh.
Is that the old one?
No, this is the new one, they they had the old one.
You going to leave that with us or you? We have to have that.
They're going to need a new one, so.
We'll get that one.
Y'all, this is the new one.
We're going to bring that here.
Yeah, we got another one.
Well, this is what you're supposed to be needing, she gave them the.
They're going to need one that says three hundred dollars or something like that.
We got to get a change.
Fill in the blank there.
We're going to have to do a, do we have to do another to just use this one?
We can get, Woody took just emailed a little, we can type, we can type in the blank.
Okay, I just.
Well, no, we have to put up the two hundred and fifty dollar security deposit, that's not a problem, that do that.
You'll get that back.
Bob's got the liability insurance written and.
And what you do with that, um with the two fifty, you just write a check, give it to Terry, she usually just takes it, puts it in her locker drawer and then and she'll give it right back to you.
We use that for all seven events.
So would you, you want this copy?
You want that, sure, sure.
Y'all, because that's the one y'all supposed to have about it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, thank y'all for for coming.
Thank y'all. I'll be checking you.
Thank you, Mister Brooks.
Okay.
Do you need me to jack it for you?
It would be fun.
It would be nice.
Is there another meeting after us?
Yeah.
Okay, did you get the justice?
What was it?
Hey, you don't.
Huh? Yeah, okay, so I wanted to talk to you about um um.
If uh.
Hey, you don't.
Was a, a citizen wanted to, remember I said the citizen wanted to rent the entire block park uh from block park to to the school, they want, we don't have a fee attached to that. And so, I remember I said, that was a great time, it's me, y'all too.
Liquor fight. You too.
That's what I'm saying now, that we set a fee of rental, see what the rental fee would be from uh uh from block park, from the, from the uh field, uh the whole block park area to the to the uh to the uh tennis court, right, um set a fee uh for that. And so, one of the things that fee needs to be a factor.
So they're going to use the whole area? So why can't, can we compare it to something?
Uh-huh, compared to.
To.
The property, the property. Uh-huh, the amphitheater is.
Ground, this is right here.
Uh-huh, fields and grounds, thousand bucks a day.
Yeah.
Thousand a day.
Yeah.
Um sure, that's true. It needs to be, it's. I was just going to be ten, ten hundred a day.
Okay.
If you all went from the big old white track, uh way over to the tennis court.
But we're, we're.
We'll go to the council secret day site.
Yeah.
That's where money would make.
Oh, yeah, and that's, and that's like two, we need to work on too, because I got a call for the Dallas Academy. You know, um remember when they called, they they took everything out of a different type of company came in and they cleaned the whole buildings out?
How you doing?
They took them all like, like this, up off the floor and uh the ceramic floor needs to be finished. At the Dallas Academy, I mean, I went, I looked in the window and I seen where the Dallas Academy building, we have to work on uh getting the floor, getting that floor done. And uh I talked to, uh I called Tim Courtland, Hopeless, and uh he hadn't returned a call back, but I will be calling him back trying to get move on that, because they, we trying to get some of this stuff, because George Armstrong wants to rent a space. I supposed to be with him, when about the building, he's wanting to rent a a a section out of it. And if we, and I seen some things that we need to uh to repair, it's up there with the wood back following, when you step up.
Upstairs, downstairs.
Uh it's right across, but cross up there.
On the back door?
Uh-huh, you know, it's, you know, you got steps, you got to go all the way up, but in the front part, they, if we don't get that wood fixed, if if drywall is following somebody here. And we see, we work on that, get that done back and get that depth back operating. People want huge spaces. I always, I'm going to send a letter to to the mayor, I'm sending some stuff tomorrow to the mayor. And uh C C U and C C Michael and uh and Corey, that uh there's some things that we got to, we just can't keep collecting money in the city properties.
Okay. Also, okay, so so we're going to propose a fee for using uh from block park on over to the end, uh fifteen hundred a day.
Okay.
Walking, um I mean, Dallas Academy, the flooring and the rental, and was also, we need to um concentrate on getting that welcome center back open.
Oh, yes, we have tours, oh, so many tours came now Saturday and um.
It's just, it's and it's restrooms in there.
And we don't even have a public restroom for them to go to, and you know, um a a lot of times, I watch all day down there on that bridge, how people come in and go across the bridge and they come back and they, they come all the way down through here and uh we have a welcome center where we've been closed ever since November, that uh uh by the time, I don't know if everything will be all right in there, you know, the shirts and.
Have you been in LA?
No, I I, you can't, uh and then another thing too, uh I talked to, uh I called Ms. Davis and was trying to talk to Ms. Davis about the uh I was asked her a question about the building, uh about the Dallas Academy. And you know, she kind of like got offended because, you know, Cannon, we asked, she's talking to him about stuff. And uh she said, well, she doesn't work there anymore. So even though if Cannon doesn't work there anymore, but uh she sees a lot that how the building used to be.
Mm-hmm.
And uh it's about working together, it's about improving our city buildings so people can be able to use them. And uh this is a project that you had before I took it on. And uh this is a separate council person that's dealing with it, and this is something that we need to close out. We need to get finished the Dallas Academy, we need to get the uh air condition put in and we need to get the bars placed around. So though, once we get all of this done and get uh the person that came in and did the work to finish the flooring and uh we should be a made a compromise, we got the Smithman building taken care of, now we trying to finish with the Dallas Academy. And I agree with you about the uh, the welcome center should be open. We have tours come through here every day, we got, uh also, we have stuff that they ordered that they're sitting up here in City Hall, over twenty, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar wolf stuff was supposed to went in to the welcome center before they closed down. So and if it means that some of us volunteer our time just to go down there as uh to open it back up to, we decide, are we going to bring the workers, to the mayor decides, he's going to bring the workers back on a day-to-day operation. We have to continue to do what we need to do to keep our city going, because we have a lot of people come through here every day. And on the weekend, there's a lot of people coming to see.
So we're going to propose anything concerning.
Yes.
The welcome center.
We have, I would like to put it to the floor, you know, put that proposal to a suggestion that see.
Well, we know that the workers are not want to be called back to work, but can you find out before you make the pro proposal, find out from uh Woody uh if we can contract?
Okay.
Uh.
I, you know, I.
Some retired people maybe or, you know.
I'll find out.
I don't know how it's supposed to be done, but ask him if if we can contract, just like we're contracting people in our awards and new grads.
Mm-hmm.
See if we can contract.
Okay, I will, and then make sure that we can do it, I'll I'll check some, I'll ask someone else too.
Mm-hmm, and so if we can do it, then you're going to make the um motion?
Yes.
To do so, okay.
Okay.
And 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 of course, you'll need to bring some numbers to the council for them to consider at the work session.
Okay.
Um the keys to the building.
And you know, I was suggested, uh was told to me, uh I did a little more research, it said we could do a resolution, since we have voted, 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 voted. We can do a resolution to change the locks on all the city buildings uh and have new keys made and uh we can give uh to the clerk and to Ms. Davis.
So and and in your resolution, in our resolution, we got to make sure that we are clear, we're we're not talking about any of the public safety buildings. We're not changing the lock on any of the public safety.
No, not the public safety, it's it's, it would be the uh.
Rental.
Mm-hmm. The rentals.
The rental, that's what we're talking about, the rental.
Okay, and I'm going to, I'm going to get Mr. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I would, I would, I would go see him, I would talk to him tomorrow. For the resolution and also about the uh contract for uh for the welcome center. See if we contract, we can open our, we could open that up, you know, we have, we have, we can, see if we get a contract for that, so we can open the welcome centers.
There's a program at Troy University, hospitality program there. Might be a good idea if you can contact the department head down there, it might be a good outreach for some of those, some of those students to come in and uh work the uh the welcome center there in hospitality trade.
Yeah, they could probably get a grade for that.
Yes, volunteer.
Intern, yeah. That's a good idea.
Yeah. That's Troy.
Troy, Troy has a very large business department and have a very large hospitality program down there.
That's where my grandbaby going. Yes, he be going to Troy University. Yes.
Yeah, so we have some students.
Yeah, we can, and uh do you have the number?
No.
We can find, I can, I'll look it up on.
Google knows.
Okay.
Thank you.
So attorney's going to work on the resolution to change the locks on the rentals. We're going to call Troy University Hospitality Department.
And we need to uh.
Check on the contract.
On the contract to try to open up the the welcome center.
Okay.
We have to do, we have to, I think, I think it's going to work because uh it's it, we need to open, we need to open my welcome center. I see people asking.
And that's not a rental, but we need to include it on the resolution for the keys.
Which one?
The welcome center.
It's not a rental?
Uh, yeah, but we need the keys.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just have a list, name the building, the with with, and uh the ones that that sit.
Okay. Okay.
Well, is that all we need?
And by we, I mean the clerk.
Oh yeah, clerk, yeah.
The clerk needs the keys.
No, we don't need them, we just need, when we have the, uh, the buildings, when we need to see, when people come to you and, uh.
Can't find anybody else.
Can't find nobody else and, um, they ask, well, who sold with the building committee? I have to have an answer for it, I have to answer to the citizen. And, uh, you know, people, um, spending their money and, uh, some things they're not satisfied with. And, uh, if we keep our house up, we should keep the city building up. We want some, we don't want people coming into the town and looking at, oh, they don't do anything in here. We gonna work on getting it clean.
And one more thing before you close, um, before you get ready to close, after. Speaking of contracts, so can we get, um, some quotes, at least three? On, uh, who can do these buildings, who can, who can rip this carpet out of conventions and? Who can clean, who can strip these floors?
Yeah, they need to be mad, clean, yeah.
Whatever, uh, and do these buildings, can we bring three quotes and, um, let the council at least start looking at them? And, and again, we'll have to go back to contracting, because.
It's gonna have to be contract.
No employee's gonna be.
We gotta do everything, we do have to be contracted now.
Yeah.
Till we get, uh, till the, uh, employees come back, we have to contract everything now.
As person in charge of the buildings, would it be possible for you to actually have a key safe, a key box? Where you actually have a copy of the key to buildings that are rented? And that way, if somebody can't get the service out of the executive? Branch, with your availability here, they would be able to, uh, go through you and you would be able to show them the building?
Well, that's why we, that's why we asked, uh, the clerk did, for the clerk to have a set of keys. That's in order, if we can't find someone else to, to go to open the building up or something we need to look at. The clerk will have the set of keys and then we could go.
Have to check them out.
Check them out, we have to check them out, sign out, say you going to look, to see what complaint, uh, what's going on with the building. And, and that's why I'm so, uh, I've been having a lot of complaints and a lot of things. But when we get a chance to get in there, open up like the George Evans building. Uh, thank God for Mr. Evans, he bought the, the, uh, what is that?
Or was redone?
Yes.
Oh, really?
He got it up.
I never see it.
He has it up, he bought it because the one that they had up there, and you know? It was just stripped.
It was terrible.
It was terrible.
It was terrible.
And, uh, he, he, he bought one and, uh, and some work inside of it, you know, that needs to. Because when you rent these places and it's hot and you be up in there, you gotta lose fans and. I think that's, we just need to, uh, if we get our buildings and stuff and, and take care of like we take care of our homes and stuff. I think, uh, we're, people will, 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 will care more about what we do for the city itself.
This is a left field suggestion, this two council members are here. In the various circles that I travel throughout the city. There's a feedback coming back and, um, I'm not opposed to defend the city council. But I think it's gotten to the point right now, as we're heading towards political season. That I would really put forth a strong suggestion. That city council unify behind a press information officer. Someone that regularly speaks to the press. I noticed sometimes Journal does give a fair representation. Uh, we have a lawyer that does give a fair representation. But at the same time, uh, a press release from city council. And I know you're working under a disadvantage because your secretary has been taken away from you.
We have a new one.
I think she, I think she resigned.
She wrote her eyes.
But, but seriously, do, do consider the, the avenue of, of a press information officer. And, uh, sometimes that information can get out and can get out to all the neighborhoods in the city. And, uh, it, it, it will stop a lot of rumor, which unfortunately. Uh, is generated by unchecked social media.
Yes.
Unchecked.
And that's why, and this, that is why, uh, I always, uh, I like to put it straight to. Not, I don't, I don't, uh.
Do you, do you press information officer, who probably do a lot of the, to get on to, uh, a couple, three of the sites? That are here, make entries on those sites.
And that's what I try to do with.
Uh, yeah, I believe, uh, I believe wholeheartedly in having a spokesperson for whatever organization you're in. I, that is why you don't see me run to anybody's camera, uh, W A K A, W S F A. I always, always lead and guide them to Cory, because I'm, I'm, I'm a firm believer that there should be one message spoken. And that person should know what that message is, whatever that message is. And when you designate a spokesperson, it is their job to present whatever that, that focus is, to present it like that. So, I, I'm, I'm firm believer in that and I don't, I don't give comments and all that. And if I'm interviewed anything about Ward Four, of course I'm gonna speak concerning Ward Four. Uh, but I just don't believe in random willy-nilly interviews, I, I'm not. I don't care to be on television, I don't care to be wherever, I don't, I don't need that. Um, we, we, a spokesperson, yeah, I, I agree, in, anywhere, in any situation, especially public office. Uh, there should be a person in charge of, of that, and so I, I, I agree.
Especially with political season.
Yes. I would see.
Cory does a good job with that, but he doesn't check, but still he's tough.
Right, he's not all.
Well, you know, for whatever reason, but Carl does and that's what Carl's business is. And if he would do it as part of his council responsibilities, then he have to pay.
And, and let me just share my, share my opinion.
Although Cory does a, a good job on that.
And, and we have to have a person with the right demeanor, so, me, it, my mouth, my mouth may be. I may do a good job, but one day my mouth be flipped, I know me, so. I, I know Angela, and it's good to know yourself. Uh, and so we need a person, uh, with that demeanor, um, that's, just stays right there. Just stays right, right there. And, and so, um, even if we have to, to groom that, whoever that person and, and say, hey, we need you to, um, every Monday morning, check social media, every Wednesday morning, check social media again. And then on the weekend, maybe dip on there one time through the weekend, uh, check it, uh, you know, so that you.
If, if, if somebody out there in the public that is a supporter of council.
Yeah.
Sees certain things, they can screenshot it.
Right.
Send it, if y'all designate.
Right, absolutely.
You know, the whole, everybody will know who says stuff.
Right, and say, you know, hey, check it. Half those people that be on those sites, uh, they don't even attend the meetings. So I'm trying to figure out how, where they get it. How did they get there, you know, I see, you know, I, I people on there, I look, I don't, I don't get off into that, I don't like that. Because half of these people that be talking, you know, they don't even, I've been here three years, I was in it. And what I see, some of them saying, where did they get it from? And I be wanting to correct it so bad, but you know, I don't get off into it, uh, I just leave it.
Every blue moon, I correct them when it's just audacious. I will correct them because, um, sometimes they need correcting to, to, somebody to say, hey, you know what? You, you know that this is not correct information. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nowhere at the meaning. Not even true.
Or nowhere.
You know, I be reading some of that stuff and I say, wait a minute, and they be just going at it, they be going at it and I said, no.
But it, it goes back to what Edie said, you, we may not like social media, but we have to have a social media presence. From the, from the president.
Oh, I see it.
Of the United States to the Pope, you will find them on this global network. Because that's just, that's just it, we're in the twenty-first century. And so, we, we have, you have to combat that with a, a counter, a more positive counter with ambassadors for Selma. And we just need those ambassadors to be speaking while we have our public relations person, uh, screenshotting and saying, hey, this looks like misinformation, can y'all just?
And then, and then also, uh, if you, uh, in the com- like I am, I'm always out in the community. If I see people in the grocery, you know, mall shopping, if I, if I'm out and about and, uh, people ask you questions. But I be straight with them, you know, when they tell me, say, well, so and so, I say, that's not true. I, I say, if you start coming, getting yourself involved in, in, on the community and come into the council meeting? And see for yourself, then you will know a lot of that stuff that they be putting on out there, it's not true. But you got to first come and see for yourself, I can't judge Councilwoman Benjamin, or if I'm not, I never come. Because somebody else tell me so and so, she say this and she.
And it is, I think it's understood by those of us that are here, that you are at a disadvantage right now, lacking a secretary.
Absolutely.
Oh, we doing, we doing good, we don't have a secretary, we be, it's teamwork, it's about working together.
I miss her.
This have, uh, this have not, we miss her, but she got a better job.
Thank God.
For that, and, but as leaders, you have to learn how to do what you need to do. Angela might know how to do a lot of our stuff, if I need Angela, I will, I'll call, I always call and say, Councilwoman Benjamin, can you help me out? I'll call her. Or either, and, or either I will go and ask someone else that I know, to type up something that I need very important. But I never let that stop me, because the morale want you to say, well, uh, they ain't got the secretary, now they can't do this. My work order still, I'ma still continue, we don't have, I'ma still gonna try to get what I need to do for, for the citizen. I'm gonna still continue to cut the grass, we gonna still come, continue to work in the community, keep it clean. It's teamwork, you know, some council might think, well, uh, she do too much, no. I was, I was out there before I came, working in the community, doing, I'm a community person.
You have a resource at, uh, Wallace College over here that I'm familiar with. Um, Michael Johnson Foundation has put a lot of technology in over there.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe there is a technology program, so they might also have an intern that is, uh, sapling. And can possibly do, uh, some of your, um, uh, social network, uh, 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 distribution, it's just a thought.
Excuse me, may I speak? You need, they need, it needs to come straight from the council, that's the way it needs to happen. Wallace College is like any business, they have people they answer to. That may not always represent the best interest of the council, they need their own independent.
And then we have, uh.
And they, they, they know.
Point well taken.
I'm telling you, I, this is really doggone.
And, and, and I have been, uh, been, uh, doing some recent, uh, I connected with, uh, uh, it's about your community of your town. Uh, I'm wanting to take part in, uh, each of the part of Alabama. They are being, wanting to know, do a survey, why do you love your city? They're putting up one of the biggest billboards, you know, cause we have a lot of people that come through different, different, uh, parts of Alabama is doing this. I connect myself with them by, through, uh, the municipality. What they have done is to try to do, you know, everybody talk about Selma. And I've never seen this yet, Angie, the big billboard of, uh, of our city, Selma. And it, it's got a picture of the, you put the bridge on there and then you can have, so. The big billboard, when people come into the, to the city, if they're coming from this end of coming in and this end. And they're asked, uh, to each leader to do a survey on their city. Why everybody loves Selma, why people like to come to Selma. So I chose to, I said I was gonna do that, I, you know, you do things, different things to brighten up your city. You know, we have a lot of people come here and they wanna know, they wanna know why, why people love coming to Selma, Alabama? Or other little states have a lot of history, uh, in their city. So I've challenged to do that, I got that this week and I was looking at and I was trying to debate. Would I like to do that, or I was gonna ask our council, all my council members, would we, would they like to be a part of that?
I do it every, then we do it, then you do it with us last year, to City Hall. Last year it was City Hall selfies.
Oh, where the selfie would be too, but they doing something different this time. They doing a, a billboard, a big billboard, uh, uh.
I love my city.
Mm-hmm, I love, yeah, they want you, they want you to do that, they asked us to try. So I wanted to ask the councils, um, will, 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 will we, will we do that? I said I was gonna bring it before the council, you know, you uplift, sometimes you have to do things. Uh, to, to move on, to make your, you know, let people know that, you know, you, you love this place. And you do whatever you can to keep the city going. And we do the selfie, we'll do that on August the sixteenth, out front with our city hall staff. We did one last year and we put it out, uh, you know, we take part, I try, I like taking part in stuff with the municipality. So we, we can be recognized, our city can be recognized, people see what we do. Yes, and it'd be good, I think it, I think it would be good, you know, uh, if we do some changes. You know, do something different and people see big billboard, uh, uh, I think, I think we, I think people would like that.
Try something new.
So I'm, I'm hoping everybody else would, would like it too, so we can put up our, in our city. Cause they're doing it, they're doing it in all the parts of Selma, you know, Alabama.
Can we get a, um, can we get a move for a couple of groups to, uh, I was thinking about, we need to do the grounds, the city, the grounds at City Hall. We need to blow these leaves, put down some.
And you know what I was gonna do that? You know what I was gonna ask?
No.
You know what I was gonna ask?
No, ma'am.
I was gonna ask Mr. Fitz, uh, because I want him to, he asked, I was gonna ask Mr. Fitz to do this for me. I would like for him to come out.
Ask Mr. Fitz to do it.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Fitz to come out, it makes me, it, it hurts me when I drive through and I see weeds. Weeds, tall weeds, round this, uh, here, and it may, may, it hurts me when I see the leaves. We need to get the leaves out, we need to brighten it, you know, I seen a rainbow yesterday after this rain. And it was shining over, coming across, like it would come across, I sit out, and I said, Lord, it's the second time I've seen in less than two weeks, a rainbow. I said, this a sign, so I'm gonna work with.
What day would you ask Mr. Fitz?
So what day, soon as possible, what day you want him to, for him to do this?
I don't know, I don't mind helping, so.
We all get out there.
When it cools off, like, and not in the heat of the day, like, I don't mind, I, I don't mind helping. Putting down some mulch and blowing, I, well, I'd like to blow some leaves, I think that would be fun.
Well, we got some blowers, we blow the leaves out, make it look better around City Hall, blow the sidewalks off, cause they don't even sweep sidewalks.
It's just a bit much, I was thinking, um, the reason I, well, one of the reasons I thought of it, if you, if you go this square, uh, the city walk. If you take the city walk, the person that does, the library does a very good job. And if we could contract them to say, hey, when you do the library, just move on over to City Hall.
Well, can we find out from them?
We can pay for the other half.
Can we find them?
I'm sure Becky could tell us, Becky, um, uh, Nichols. Could tell us, uh, they do a great job in my opinion at the library, I don't know who it, who it is. But while they're, uh, maintaining there, why don't they just move on over to City Hall, it's right next door. But while they're maintaining there, why don't they just move on over to City Hall, it's right next door and um.
We could ask.
Mm-hmm. Pay the contract.
And that's the type of information that your public information officer.
Absolutely.
Will need to put out.
And that's what I've been trying to do.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, and that's what I told you last.
Yeah, and that's what I try to do, I try to talk about.
Talk about the council.
When they were talking about the light, I put that out about the cameras, the lights, we all, I say, when you talking about what I'm doing, trying to help my city, um, I, I had an article, I went to the paper and I brought him out and I told him, now you understand, you see how many lights out in the city of those red, those cameras, those red lights? It, that's just too many, and you got main traffic travel all day, all day, up and down, up and down. And those lights are not on state highway, they're in the city, so it's our responsibility as a committee to come up with, we need to get those lights fixed, and that's what we do, that's why I went before the paper and said, yes. Every time you call, yes, we do have a man, he's ill, he's always going to the doctor, he can't do it by himself, he's the only one man. He does it, he put those six old lights, he been patching and patching, I have seen him, don't like stays on a while, he go right back out. It, they are nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty boxes, do we gotta come up, here we in the twenty, what, everybody going twenty-twenty? We have to come up to the update, we gotta update and that's what I hope that, you know, we have a team of council people that uh like to move on.
Like you.
We do, we have a team, we have a team of council women, yes, we do, we do.
A team of council women.
A team of council women, yes, Angela has her way of doing her things, I have my way, Maya has her way, Susan has her way, but we get it done. We, 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 we work together, we get it done. That's what they say, we have to do it, so we gonna close this meeting now, is anything else y'all wanna ask us?
No, if you wanna stick around, I'll go ahead and type this up, if you wanna stick, stick in here with me.
Yeah, I'll stick in here.
I'll type it, bring this up real.
And then I'll call Cory, I gotta drop some off for him.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.